I'd like to call the order, the Town Council Meeting of November 16th, with a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
To the flag of America.
State of America.
Religious stand.
Religious stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business tonight is Town Council Appointments, a discussion on Town Council Appointments. Council Discussion Regarding Town Council Representative Appointments to Boards, Commissions, and Committees. I would like to open a discussion regarding interest in various council appointments to commissions, boards, and committees.
I'd like the Planning Board, this is Sharon Davis.
Scott Billhurst, I'd like to retain my liaison with the Conservation Commission, which I am a former member years ago, and also the Recreation Commission. Regrettably, the Recreation Commission has chosen to meet on the Town Council Meeting Night, so it kind of screws that up. But anyways, those are my two requests, thank you.
Two requests? You do also? Okay. Planning Board with Sharon. Sharon requested the Planning Board.
Yeah.
Is there any other interest in the Conservation Commission? Bob Marvel?
Yeah.
Bob Marvel? I'm going to point Bob Marvel to the liaison to the Conservation Commission. Scott Billhurst to the Recreation Commission? And Michael Gary?
I'll take zoning.
Zoning.
See, I just came from there.
Sure.
Is there a DPW liaison or anything like that as all, is that at all us?
There is not.
Okay.
There's Land Trust, Historic Commission, Juvenile Hearing Board, and the Animal Control Commission, which...
You know what? I'll take Animal Control.
So that leaves Land Trust, Historic Commission, and the Juvenile Hearing Board.
I'll take, uh...I don't know if I have, I don't, what night do they normally meet though? Because I would mind Land Trust.
Usually what? Council's Monday night? I think it's the, Lisa?
She would know because she does all...
Monday nights are council, Tuesday night is...
Well, Recreation Commission is not meeting at night.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
So Wednesday night would be planning.
Wednesday night, second Wednesday of the month is planning.
And Thursday night is zoning.
First Wednesday of the month is Planning Board.
Alright, so I'll speak loud so you can hear me.
Sure, thank you.
So Town Council is the first and third Mondays of the month. Conservation Commission is second Thursday of the month. Historic District Commission is the fourth Monday, on alternating months if they need it all. It's only as needed and if something comes up. The Land Trust, Water Trustees is the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month at Crane House. It's their thing.
That's on, and I have a meeting on the second Tuesday, so...
Juvenile Hearing Board, we've had a meeting lately. There's been very wealthy head children apparently in town.
Excellent.
And it's not anything that the public can attend anymore.
Sure.
Police Commission is the second Thursday of the month at the police station at 3:30 PM. Planning Board is the first Wednesday of the month. It's only voted on the third Thursday. And as I said before, Rec Commission is first Monday, Monday week, but it's probate day.
And the Land Trust, did you mention the Land Trust?
Land Trust is second and fourth Tuesday.
Land Trust, Michael Gary? Economic Development Commission, if, you know, and...
If they are.
Yes, if that comes through fruition, Michael Gary will be the liaison.
We'll work on that. That's what we need, some economic development.
Okay, as far as the other boards and commissions, we'll have to decide maybe at a later date in regards to who the liaisons are. I will be the, I guess, the liaison to the...I'm trying to think here. I had it written down. Whatever Frank was before, it's the Town. What's that liaison? The...
Council, personal, personnel liaison.
Sure, yes, I will be the personnel liaison. I will take that role. Okay, with all that discussed, into our second, uh, for discussion here, is a discussion regarding appointments of Town Solicitor, Zoning Solicitor, Prosecutions, Lawyer, and Probate Judge. I have prepared a statement for my discussion. I will open it up to discussion following. "I am opening this discussion process regarding our town's legal representation in order to evaluate and to take a good look into what is best for the town in our newly-elected Town Council. Newly-elected Town Councils typically make appointments of employees and advisors for the new term early on. This newly-elected council should have the ability to choose their own advisors to provide us with legal counsel for various functions. This is to include the Town Solicitor, the Zoning Solicitor, and Planning Board Solicitor. They are vital to the ins and outs of our daily and long-term operations. They will guide us in our decision-making processes and keep us on sound legal footing. Therefore, I suggest to this council that we move forward with the process to obtain our own legal advisors. It is with optimism that we will find the right fit for this new council. I propose that we move forward as follows for discussion. Town Council Solicitor and Zoning Board Solicitor will share the same legal advisors and allow the Planning Board to have separate legal advisors. The Planning Board should have separate representation because the zoning board is the avenue for appeal on the Planning Board decisions. It should not be all encompassed together. This is the type of arrangement that many towns choose to follow. The Town Council would then be soliciting proposals from law firms to provide services for two functions: Town Council and zoning, and the Planning Board. I am comfortable with the current Prosecution's Attorney and Probate Judge because they serve more of an operational function than a strategic function that Solicitors provide the Town Boards and Commissions." "The proposed process for soliciting applications and proposals for Town Solicitor. Make it known that the council would like to open the process to choose its own legal representation, being the current Solicitors or candidates chosen from applicant proposals. I would like to propose to place notices in the Wesley Sun and the Providence Journal to receive submitted proposals to provide our necessary legal services. Proposals to be received no later than November 30th. I would also like to ask the town's current legal advisors, being the Town Solicitor, the Zoning Solicitor, and the Planning Board Solicitor, to provide letters to the Town Council indicating whether they would like to continue in their capacities. If so, they must also submit a proposal for consideration. Town Council members would then review, narrow down the proposals, and choose candidates for interviews that they believe are qualified. I recommend that each councillor choose two candidates for interviewing consideration, then ultimately narrowing down candidate proposals to two candidates to be interviewed by the council. Also, schedule interviews with candidates presumably during executive session or at a special meeting, date and time to be announced. The Town Council can discuss the merits and qualifications of candidates at this meeting and also set a date to appoint at a regular Town Council meeting, and it's open for discussion."
Yep, I got one. So Town Council, Planning, share the same Solicitor. Correct. Okay, zoning, I know that I said on zoning, we have our own. We have a separate, we don't have the same as the two.
You need to talk louder.
Sorry Sharon, my question was to...
No, just turn it off.
My question was, we share the same legal advisor, Town Council, Planning, zoning has your own. So what you're proposing or you're asking is, you want to have the same for everybody, or...
I, I want the Planning Board to have a different council. So it's going to go, the Town Council and the Zoning Board will share legal advisors, and the Planning Board will have separate legal advisors, different firm. Which we will choose.
Okay. Okay, you want to keep probate by itself, right?
Probate and the Prosecution's Attorney, because again, they serve more of an operational function versus a strategic function for the boards.
Now that usually, Lisa, that usually goes up. Sorry Sharon, I don't mean to cut you off. That would have to go up for a bid like you talked about in the discussion, right?
We, which that.
For attorney.
We can certainly pull together an ad.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you saying RFP, like it's just that, right?
Or be a, like a notice.
Like an RFP, yeah, or a notice, like see what the state would do or anybody else, okay.
Is that the...
Yeah, yeah, thank you, yep. I know this is our first night together, you know, maybe this is something we could, are you looking for to get a vote on this or a motion?
I'm looking to, whether it has...
Take up an executive session?
We don't, no, no, we, we cannot make, we cannot make a vote on this tonight.
Okay, so something you could, we want to talk about.
Yes, that's why we're having a discussion on it, on it right now.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I'd like to say a few things.
Sure.
There's a lot of ways to approach this, but I want to say that one of the campaign things that I had was continuity in town government. We lost our long-serving Town Manager, and we're going to be having a new Town Manager. And continuity in this, continuity in this town is very important. So although I am willing to work with the, my fellow counselors on this legal representation, I think that Kevin McAllister has shown a long, not only a dedication to this town, but he brings an element not only of his professional expertise, he also brings a situation where he would bring the continuity, he understands the town, and he is a Solicitor that doesn't give the council political advice, which I think is very important. Whether the lawyers are, should be given the council political advice, they should get that elsewhere. But a good lawyer explains the legal issues and the matters, what they are without prejudice, and the pros and cons, and that's why I admire Kevin McAllister, and I think the council should strongly think about replacing him. But I'm willing to work with this council to advance the agenda of the town. But I think that with all the soul of things and other things, that he's probably got a bad rap. So I do ask people to keep an open mind on him, thank you.
Thank you Scott. Anyone else?
I just, you know, I know Kevin from zoning, that's about as far as that goes. My kind of thing is, you know, in my background, if a system's working and somebody's doing the job, they should probably stay in that job. But on the other side, I understand what you're saying is, you'd like to start fresh and go from there.
Mr. McAllister has the opportunity to submit a proposal and, and offer up his services as well. It's not, and we're not writing Mr. McAllister off, we're giving him the opportunity as well to...
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's fair.
Works for me.
I'll just comment there.
Oh, go ahead Sharon.
Go ahead Sharon.
I'm a buyer from the 70s, okay? And I, I think that it's always good to, to go out for bid. That's, you know, you might find somebody better, or you might say that the guy that you have is, is the right one. But I definitely think we should go out for bid. And then I also agree that the Planning Board should have their own separate Solicitors, separate from the Town Council for sure. So I, I'm in favor of your suggestion.
Thank you Sharon.
Yeah, I'll also say that I support, first of all, I support us as, as a new council looking and looking at our options in terms of Solicitors, you know, deciding who we want to have as, as our representation. And I do also support the Planning Board having the opportunity to do the, do the same, you know, in having their own representation.
Scott, did you have any comment on that, on the separation of the Planning Board and the Town Council?
I think, as I understand it, pretty much, that's pretty much the present posture.
No, it isn't.
The same law firm is covering planning in, in the Town Council currently, Scott.
I'll stand corrected on that. Basically, uh, I think you should consider the cost factor.
That will be considered, sure.
I, I got a question for Lisa. As, as long as you've been doing this, and you've got a little bit more time behind the belt than we do, how has the practice always been throughout the years? Is it Town Council and Planning has the same Solicitor, or is it spread out, or how's it been?
Depends, depends on what the firm offers. Some firms in the past have lawyers to take care of everything.
Okay.
Some did not want to be on probate.
Okay.
Some didn't want to be on probate. It's gone a number of different ways. With an elected council that had majority, I mean, like a Democratic Committee, had the majority. That information would come in, or get proven known, because they would have selected somebody who had it.
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
A last, just, just one more question, Lisa. So we, this isn't something we need to have a vote on, I, we can authorize you?
You can authorize me to, I can, I can prepare an ad, there are ads.
Okay.
If you look at it, you can add it, you can have me, me...
Then I will now authorize you to, sure. Okay, and I'm going to authorize you now to do that. Yes, please.
I have one question though.
Sure.
If you wanted those proposals back by 11:30, I think that's a bit, that's too close.
Too close, two weeks?
Deadline is very, that's a very tough deadline.
Very tough deadline? Okay, um, we don't have a meeting on the 30th, right? So that's why I was just kind of, you know, trying to squeeze it in here. So I will get with you Lisa and discuss moving that date out. Yes Kevin?
I just, while you're on this discussion, I just want to add a couple of things that, to make sure that the council considers this. The Solicitor's job is more than advising the Town Council, or the Planning Board, or the Zoning Board. On a daily basis, the Solicitor gets consulted by members of the administration, be it the Town Manager, the Police Chief, the Tax Assessor, the Town Clerk, and other departments, Tax Assessor. So I, I just want to make sure the council, because there's three new members, understands that it is a lot more than the Planning Board, the Council, and the Zoning Board. Secondly, the town gets involved in litigation, typically gets sued, there's some kind of appeal, administrative proceeding against the town DEM or Department of Health, which both have happened since I've been a Solicitor. The Town Solicitor, I believe, has traditionally done all that kind of work in addition to representing the Town Council. So I, I would say that most of the legal work is other than those boards, the Council, the Planning Board, and the Zoning Board. So I just, since that wasn't mentioned tonight, and I'm not suggesting you, you didn't know that, but just to make sure you did know, I was reluctant to raise my hand, I was afraid you'd think I'm trying to make a pitch for, for myself. I'm not trying to make a pitch tonight, I just want to make sure that the job is, just to give an example with Town Clerk. Virtually on a daily basis, there are issues, they're often not that time-consuming, but I basically talk to Lisa every day. There's open meetings, issues, there's requests for public documents, there's papers being served on the town lawsuit or notice of a claim. So there's a lot to it besides the Council and the Boards. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Thank you Kevin.
Thank you, thanks Kevin.
Is there any more discussion? Okay, I would like to move to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Excuse me, Lisa.
I'd like to raise my hand.
Sure.
If you could see my face, you'd see I have a straight point, because I don't have...
Other dates.
I expect your dates to 2020 because they're already coming over.
Correct.
So I'm going to...
Actually have that noted, and I forgot to mention it.
Okay, well I just want to make sure that it is reported, and I can put it out for the next council meeting corrective, if you like. So you can print over that if you want to.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, so the next, the next topic on the agenda is Boards and Commissions, is to discuss, consider, and possibly vote to reappoint Alfred Diorio to the Planning Board.
I like to take exception to these appointments, although I'm going to vote for them. I think what concerns me is that historically, even though somebody's being reappointed, we interview them procedurally, even if we know them very well, or they do it repeatedly. So I would respectfully ask the Council President to put on the first meeting, December, a discussion on meeting procedures and organization, dealing, including appointments, how they're going to be handled. Because this appointment is a departure from what we traditionally have been doing, and that is to at least bring the people in and talk to them, even if it's by, by Zoom. And I just want to point that out for the record, thank you.
Thank you Scott. Yes Sharon.
If you look at both, well, let's just start with Al. He said he wanted his, his, his interview to be held in open session. So I thought we would be interviewing him at this point, at this meeting. Am I right or wrong?
That is, the latter that goes up to them. Once they are appointed, typically, I hate to disagree with you, Counselor Hurst, but typically what we do is, since if they're already serving on a board or a commission, it's a courtesy to just put them on before the council. I mean, if the Town Council, as it sits right now, would like to change the way it does that, we can certainly make that change. And apparently you would like to...
Well, I think, I think we need to have a meeting in December to talk about procedural and mechanical stuff. But I've known we've had people in the past that served on, like the Juvenile Hearing Board, Board, excuse me, and we brought them in and we talked to them, and they said they enjoyed their service and all that type of stuff. So I would respectfully disagree with you. But I mean, it is what it is. But I'm just saying is that I remember a number of times people were interviewed, even though they were already serving.
There have been times, you're right. But there have been times more often than not, that it just goes on the agenda to discuss, potentially vote.
Well, I...
However you would like to go forward, since you are the new sitting Town Council, I'm happy to accommodate however you want to go forward.
Yeah, I just hope that in December, at the meeting in December, we talk about some of these procedural things. So, so we have some, at least some consistency of how we handle these things. In, in rules of the meeting, how do people get things on the agenda, and things of that nature. So I asked the Council President publicly for that, because it avoids a lot of confusion with the public, the council members, and things like that.
I would absolutely entertain that discussion Scott, I think that's a good discussion to have.
So you put something on the next agenda.
Sure.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry Sharon, I concur with you.
Can I?
Yep.
I guess I still wanted to know if Al, and then when we talk about Emily, if they were anticipating being here at this meeting and having us interview them.
No, I did not contact them, because we have in the past, just put it on.
Okay, that's fine.
We can, we can make a change however this council would like to go forward. I'm happy to do it whichever way you want, I'm very flexible.
Yeah, I, I concur with Mr. Hurst.
And a lot of times you would like to meet the people.
Yeah, it never hurts, I mean, whatever board you serve on, I mean, I'm sure, you know, Counselor Marvel, President, President Moffett, if anybody came in here and said, hey, I want to run the Economic Development Corporation, I'm sure we'd all like to sit down and sit there, I'm sure Brian would like to involve, I'm sure Chief would be involved too, and Kevin.
Well, that, that would be a different situation where there's applications that have not been appointed, then yes, you would interview.
Yeah, I mean, I think it just behooves us, in our best interests, the town's interest.
Right past those appointments, if you like, and we can...
I would like to stick with the appointments. I think the body of work speaks for themselves, the current job that they do on it. I, I would like to move forward with it, to discuss, consider, and possibly vote.
Do we have any other?
Whatever you want to do.
I just want to say that I'm going to vote for these appointments, but I'm just saying procedurally, I think it was different than what we normally do, or what I remember, you and I will disagree on that. But I think the Planning Board is, is the most, with the arguable exception of maybe the Board of Canvases, because they control elections. The Planning Board is the number one appointed board in this town, that's how important it is. And I will go along with the appointments, but I appreciate the support of Mr. Gary on this thing. But the thing is, and I'm not saying the Juvenile Hearing Board is not that important, but we brought people in and we chit-chatted with them, and they said they enjoy it, and they like to work with kids, and that type of stuff. And, and that doesn't meet all the time, and it hasn't met for quite a while, as I understand it. But I'll go along with the appointments, but I just, I'm concerned that something that important, and people are very concerned about land use in this town especially, that we should at least talk to these people, even though we know them, we know they're going to be reappointed anyways. But I will vote for the appointments, but like I said to the Council President, I want a discussion on procedural-type things that are December meeting. So there's no misunderstandings, we know how, all these procedural-type things, thank you.
Thank you Scott.
So, alright.
Steve?
Yes Sharon, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to vote to reappoint Alfred Diorio to the Planning Board.
Is there a second? I'll second. Any further discussion?
Be kind of nice to see him first, but no.
Alright, we'll take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any not in favor? That's unanimous, the ayes have it. The passion, the motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a council discussion regarding appointments, I'm sorry, I messed that one up. Next on it is discuss, consider, and possibly vote to reappoint Emily Shemshania to the Planning Board.
Make motion, we accept. I second.
Any discussion?
I think Emily's been doing a great job.
As do I. Take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All not in favor? That's unanimous, the ayes have it.
Lisa, if Emily moves up, which she has a full-time position now, that leaves planning open to needing two alternates, right?
Right, she's already starting in her full term capacity, she replaced...
And of course, there's no other candidates that have stepped up. Okay, so planning short too.
Okay, now we're going to open up the public forum. I just want to read a couple instructions for, for those out there. If you're calling in by the phone, dial nine to raise your hand, and wait for the meeting host to ask you to unmute. Once you've been on, asked to unmute, dial star six to unmute and speak. If you're listening...
To raise your hand, star nine, isn't it star nine?
Yes, star nine, I apologize. And it is a star six to unmute yourself. I would suggest if you're going to talk, or you're going to speak, that you hit star nine and just get in line. If you're listening through computer, just raise your hand within the Zoom participants window, and wait for the meeting host to ask you to unmute. Once asked to unmute, press unmute to unmute and speak. Chris, this is where I might need some help.
You're doing great.
Anyone who wishes to speak?
Yeah, yeah, it's showing up right here.
Hi, Carol DeRozers, Pleasant View Drive.
Good evening Carol.
I just want to congratulate and thank all of you for running for office, and I am very much looking forward to our new council working together, and very excited for how this is already going so smoothly, thank you.
Thank you Carol.
Hello?
Yes.
Um, did you do anything for the liquor meeting, liquor license?
That was held earlier, and since you weren't there, it will probably have to be rescheduled, isn't that right Lisa, or not?
I've been on the phone since, I, I mean, I heard you get sworn in.
It was before that, it was at 6:30.
6:30? But we were told to call at 7:00.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Lisa, what, what do we do? Lisa?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, we're going to reschedule to December 7th? Is that, yes. 7 o'clock, December 7th.
Alright, 7, not 6:30, because she just told me I was supposed to call at 6:30.
That was because we had a swearing in this time for the new council, that's why we started earlier, that's all.
Okay, well, we weren't aware of it. Okay, so December, what was it?
7th, December 7th, at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Hi, this is Joe Morel, Old Depot Road. Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you Joe.
You're welcome. One thing I'd like to point out, and I realize it's the first meeting, until we get to recognize the, the voices, it's difficult to tell who is speaking. So I, I think that would be, would be helpful. The other point I want to mention, and it was discussed at the first council meeting when they were talking about solar projects approved and denied. There were two outstanding fees that were due to the town. One was paid, which was the Surenzia project. And the last time I spoke to Lisa, unless it's changed, there's a fee of $2,800 and change that was still outstanding from the Carapesa project on Woodville Road that was denied. So I'm not sure what the status is on that. I know Kevin was working on that. So I just wanted to see if we can get some type of resolution on that. The other thing I want to mention and speaking about Kevin, it took me a while to realize this, myself being involved for almost two and a half years. But what I found was that Kevin really enjoys working in our town. He understands our town. I spoke to Kevin on the phone. He has done, in my opinion, you know, things have changed and things that we were told that weren't correct have been challenged. And that's another story, another day. But I agree with, with Scott, with so many changes taking place in the town that, and I'm sure you'll do your due diligence and Sharon pointed out, and I think Steve mentioned it, we need to check to see also, but I just think that Kevin has really done a good job for us. I just wanted to mention that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you Joe.
Thank you Joe.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Hi, it's Eric Pippler here. I just wanted to echo some of the sentiments that have already been expressed and thank all of you for, for running and for serving the town in this capacity. I know it's a thankless task. And I want to congratulate you all. So we're really excited about, about having a new town council and we're really looking forward to working. I, I think many, many, many people in town are looking forward to working with the new town council in a constructive manner. And then the other thing I wanted to do, because I think a very important topic was raised tonight and this actually came up several months ago. I believe it was last December when there were some, there was some controversy over changes that the president of the town council wanted to institute to the, to the rules concerning public forum. And, you know, we all know that the president runs the meetings and, you know, certainly has the authority to do that. But what came out of that was that our town charter actually includes, you know, a provision in it which gives the town council the right to create rules of procedure to govern its own, you know, its own, its own activities, its own procedures. And the town of Hopkinton, unlike many towns, I would say most towns, doesn't have any rules of conduct, it doesn't have any bylaws. So to this point about, in this instance, just, you know, whether specifically, you know, how town appointments ought to be handled and whether there should or shouldn't or need to be an interview for reappointments and that sort of thing. I think there's a great opportunity here with the new town council, you know, in consultation with the town solicitor, whoever that may be, to formulate some rules of procedure that can also guarantee some very important things for, for council members. So for example, a typical rule might be that, that any town council member can put an item on the agenda, you know, for discussion under new business and then, you know, typically would be either discussed at the next meeting or would be scheduled for a subsequent discussion. So I, I think it would be great, I think it would be a great thing for this town council to do to embrace that provision in the charter that gives you that authority and then to codify some of these things. And your town solicitor certainly can find any number of models from bylaws that towns all around us have adopted. And, you know, it shouldn't be that hard and I think it will help to make sure that the, that every member of the council is fully empowered to represent, represent his or her constituents. I think that'd be a great thing. So I just wanted to add that, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? One last chance. Seeing no other hands raised or inquiries to speak, I make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I move that we adjourn in honor of our retiring town council members, Frank T. Landolpe, Barbara Anko Palbo and Sylvia K. Thompson.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Ding button is down at the bottom right.